I have so much stuff that I need to do. Here is dinner. They were definitely messy to roll. First meal of the day. Literally the texture that I'm wanting. Listening to this podcast on gut health. Good morning and welcome back to another vlog. It's Tuesday and it's seven. I woke up at five fifty this morning. I woke up without an alarm. I went to bed at eleven thirty-ish. I did work last night. I came home at like ten something. By the time I showered, tidied up the house, did my skincare, I read. It was late and I was so excited to come home at ten. I was like, okay, I'm gonna be in bed by ten thirty. It did not happen. I am going to the gym right now. I'm going a little bit earlier because today technically have it off. I'm really hoping somebody might give up their dinner shift, but I doubt that's gonna happen. So I just want to go to the gym, get that out of the way. I want to, actually, I need to go to FedEx, which as I'm telling you that I doubt anybody's gonna give up their shift. Somebody just texted me asking me if I want their lunch shift, so I suppose I will do that. But anyways, now we need to rush. First and foremost, we're gonna take our pre-workout stock. I'm drinking a Celsius this morning. I just filled up my flask and I'm gonna take a couple of anti-cold things because I've been feeling a little bit sniffly ever since yesterday and I think actually for the last two days. I think it's because it's been very cold over the last few days and I just have not been dressing correctly for the weather because I tend to think that just because I live in California that, that I, I'm, I'm able to just not wear the proper attire, if that makes sense. So I'm gonna take two echinachas. And then I'm gonna take three of these wellness tablets. This is all from Whole Foods. You can get everything online. I'm very, I don't wanna say paranoid about getting sick, but I get paranoid about getting sick. Not a hypochondriac. I just cannot afford to get sick. These are disgusting. Absolutely disgusting. Oh, sick. I'm also gonna have some vitamin C as well. So we are stocked up on all the health things this morning. Probably take this to actually Sambuku. It's cold relief. This is the best. Would highly recommend doing all of this with the meal, but we don't have time. Alrighty. Taking a scoop of taurine. Today I'm gonna do a pull day at the gym. Ready to go. Oh, and sour. I'll see you at the gym. Okay, apparently the state of California, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe other states have this too, but if you work seven days in a row, you get overtime despite, it doesn't matter how many hours you're at, which is so frustrating because I'm only at thirty-one hours for the week. And they won't let me work today because I'm, because it would be my seventh day in a row, which is so frustrating because it's like, I wanna work. It's not that I wanna work, I need to work, so let me work. But they won't let me. So I guess I have today off, which I'm happy because I don't, I, I have so much stuff that I need to do, but at the same time, it would have been great to go work because I wanted to make money. So yeah, that's that. But anyways, just went grocery shopping and I picked up this Core Defense Shot. It has zinc and vitamin D. And I also got this Beekeepers Propolis Vitamin C for immunity. I'll show you my little grocery haul at home. I feel like I'm a little, I'm a little irritated, like my mood kind of like shifted just because it's just so frustrating that that law is in place or whatever it is, rule, whatever you wanna call it. I can't stand when somebody tells me that I can't do something when I wanna do it. This has sunflower lecithin in it. That's terrible. I should have read the ingredients. Anyways, let's have it. Get that sunflower in our bodies. I can't waste it. It was like four dollars. That does not taste very good. It's just very sweet. Okay. Yeah. This should be good. This has passion fruit, pineapple juice lime, ginger, habanero. I should have read the ingredients on this because where's the ginger? Is there ginger? Where's the ginger? Oh yeah, it does have ginger. Okay, it's fine. The passion fruit is so good. I also had a return at Amazon, so I dropped that off today, which I'm happy about. But yeah, FedEx, T-Mobile, and then we'll go home. And I think I'm gonna go work from a coffee shop today since I have the day off, so. Getting a new screen protector honestly feels like getting a new phone. It was like all cracked. There was like a huge crack here and then the crack was going through my camera like that. So whenever I was using the front camera, it looked so funny, but yay, new screen protector. Okay, so I think that I've created the perfect plan to ensure that I hit all of the bullet points that I'm trying to hit today. It is twelve right now. I'm making breakfast and I am going to just go over to Blue Bottle and get some studying done. That is priority and I feel like if I just stay at home and get ready for the day, an hour is gonna go by. By the time an hour goes by, I'm gonna, it's just whatever. The point is, is that I'm just gonna eat and we're gonna head off to Blue Bottle and we're gonna do two to three hours of just deep focused work. I'm gonna study and we're gonna get that squared away, get as much work done as possible. I'm going to, after those two to three hours of focused work, I'm gonna edit some short form content at the coffee shop. And then I'm gonna walk over to the Y and get my sauna session in. So I think I'm gonna bring my clothes with me. I'll rinse off and then I'll go to Trader Joe's and pick up some cucumbers and tomatoes for dinner. I like to stack things on top of one another. I don't like to like go there and then like come back home and change and then go there and then, do you know what I mean? And also ideally, I would love to catch the sunset tonight. So if possible, maybe after the coffee shop, in between going to the sauna. I don't think that'll work out though. We'll see. We'll kind of play it by ear, but I will bring my clothing with me. Maybe after the sauna and after Trader Joe's, when I get home, I'll eat and then I'll go. But then the sun will, will have set already. I don't know. We have to, we have to give, give up something. Either the sunset or the sauna. I haven't been to the, uh, I haven't had a sauna session for a while. I think the last one that I had was at the beginning of last week and I really wanna try to make sure I get two, at the, at a minimum, two sauna sessions in per week. Let me show you everything that I got from Whole Foods. I'm currently making breakfast right now. Eggs, eggs, I got eggs. Uh, I got two packages of ground bison. These were on sale. So I just stocked up. I have one in my freezer already, but I love to make sure that I have these on hand. Also, it was like four dollars off or something. I got some chicken thighs for dinner. I'm gonna make the, the like Greek style. I got some ground beef for dinner tomorrow. I'm gonna make like a nice pasta dinner tomorrow. Speaking of pasta, this is the pasta sauce that I got. This is arugata, organic arugata. The ingredients are fantastic. And then also to go with dinner tomorrow, I got these Crunch Master crackers. I love these. These are so good. They're so yummy and the ingredients are great. They're made with olive oil. And then I got some goat cheese to go with those crackers. I got a huge bag of Japanese sweet potatoes. I'm constantly running out. I got some bananas. I got some mustard because I'm out. I got two avocados. I've been on a huge Brussels sprout kick lately. I love these air fried with balsamic glaze. So good. And then I also got some yogurt. This one is my current obsession. But I actually have not tried the plain one. I like using the plain one for smoothies, for making tzatziki and just like I made a nice, healthy homemade ranch last week with plain Greek yogurt. It's so good. So I like having that. Uh, and then I stocked up on two of these. I have a bunch of flavored Icelandic provision yogurts in my fridge right now, but this flavor is so delicious. I could not pass it up. So picked that up as well. And then last but not least, I got some plantain chips. I'm on a huge plantain chip cake. They're so good. They're so delicious. Alright, first meal of the day. I'm so excited to try out this Siggy's yogurt. It's not focusing, but it's vanilla and cinnamon. Like that sounds so good. Very excited. I'm absolutely dead. And I missed a really nice sunset, but it's okay. It was for health purposes. It's been a day. It's six thirty, I think. I just came home. I was at Blue Bottle for a while. I got a lot done. Well, no, I'm, I take that back. I only focused on studying for my exam and that's basically all that I did. But I'm really happy about the work that I put into it. So I still have like a ton to do, but I decided that I think I'm gonna start trying to do one chapter plus a day. Moving forward, I'm going to wake up as early as whatever. And the first hour of the morning, I'm just gonna dedicate purely to studying, to try and get it done as quickly as humanly possible. I just came back from the sauna. I went, um, on my forty-five minute outdoor walk right after the coffee shop. And then I went to the sauna, thirty minutes. I'm so like drained, but it's only because I'm hungry and I haven't eaten since breakfast. So I would like to hydrate right now. I'm gonna pour some coconut water and I'm gonna, I need to shower. Like I'm gonna, I need to do an everything shower. I think I'm gonna do a quick little face mask with some new products that I got. And we're gonna make dinner. I wanna tidy up the house. I wanna edit a YouTube video. I wanna make a little healthy dessert tonight that I will show you. I have like a vision in my head, but we'll see if it works out. And I really want to read tonight because I have two books that I borrowed from the library that I'm just, ugh. I wanna just like sit and just read them, so I wanna do that. And while we eat dinner, we're gonna watch the new episode of The Bachelor. And did I already mention editing a video and some short form content? I don't know how we're gonna fit that into the next four hours, but we'll read in bed, so I think, I think we should be fine. But first and foremost, let's hydrate. I forgot to get coconut water today. When I was at Blue Bottle, I got two coffees at Blue Bottle and I told myself I wasn't gonna get coffees like that, but I was there for like three, three hours. I was there for a while. That's, it felt like a while. So I got a cappuccino and those never last very long. Next time I'm gonna get a latte. They're a little bit bigger. And then I got a cold brew. And while I was there, I was watching this TikTok about these really cool things that somebody found at Whole Foods. There's like this cream, chive cream cheese by Nancy's. It's like probiotic, a probiotic cream cheese or whatever that I really wanna get. And there's like this cookie granola by Purely Elizabeth and it just looks really good. It's like a cookie granola. And I'm like, that sounds so good. So clearly, naturally, I need to go back and I need coconut water, so. I just showered. So I was gonna make Greek bowls, but honestly, I'm just like too tired to do all that work. So I have a Japanese sweet potato in the air fryer right now. I'm gonna have chicken sausage and I think some Brussels. And while that's in the air, air fryer, I'm going to try to recreate these strawberry and cream bliss balls. So I'm gonna gather up all of the ingredients and we're gonna, we're gonna try to do this, fingers crossed. And I also have The Bachelor playing in the background, so that's gonna be my night. I still need to clean. I like to have the light clean, but I still have some laundry I need to fold. I'm doing some laundry right now. So who knows what we're gonna be able to get to accomplish today? Honestly, I think that if I just clean, then I'll feel better. Maybe I won't be able to edit my YouTube video, but I'll try to do that tomorrow morning because I just can't not have a clean environment. It is way too stressful. So the ingredients that I'm gonna be using to make these balls are gonna be dates, cashews, maple syrup, coconut flakes, freeze dried strawberries, coconut oil, vanilla and some salts. I'm gonna try to literally just blend in here and we're gonna see how it goes. If the flavor is fine, I think I'm gonna add some collagen to like make them like healthier and add a little bit of protein. So I'm nervous. Let's give it a go. Alright, I've got about a cup of dates. I feel like they're gonna be, it's gonna be a little dry. I might add, honestly, I might add a little bit of half and half in here. So that way it's like strawberries and cream. Get it? Probably better if you see me while I talk. But yeah, I think I'll add a little bit of half and half to make it, like I said, strawberries and cream. But we'll see after I add in cashews because it's supposed to like turn into a paste. Adding a cup of the cashews. Honestly, I don't even know how much strawberries to add. Oh, I'm gonna add the coconut oil. I feel like that will kind of like blend it up nicely. So I'm gonna blend the coconut oil, cashews and the dates first. And actually I'm gonna add the maple syrup as well. Okay, so this is what it's looking like. Honestly, I can't decide if I wanna put collagen or protein powder in here. But this is literally the texture that I'm wanting. I'm gonna try it out. Honestly, it tastes pretty darn good. I'm gonna add the freeze dried strawberries now. I feel like this is gonna be a pretty small portion, but I mean, I don't know, I'm almost out of cashews. Okay, I'm gonna do about a cup of strawberries. I think I'm just gonna add the collagen. Because that way it won't like change the flavor. I'm gonna add vanilla extract, just measuring with my eyeballs. I'm gonna add some salt. Almost forgot the coconut flakes. I'm just gonna do a tiny splash of the cream. Okay, I'm gonna add the collagen. I hope I don't ruin it. This is what it's looking like now. A little bit more cream. Okay, so the mistake was adding water because I thought it was too much or too chunky. So I just added a little bit, but it was a little too much. So then I added more cashews and then another couple of dates. And I think the texture came apart, but taste wise, this is honestly incredible. I'm gonna put it in the fridge, just to have it like harden a little bit. And then we're gonna try to roll them into balls and I'm gonna dip them into coconut flakes. Taste wise, so good. And a full serving of the collagen, so protein and collagen. I love it. So good. Oh my goodness, I literally licked that thing clean, like the, the food processor basically licked it clean because of how good these are. These are insane. I'm literally keeping this forever so that I can keep the recipe. Obviously, they don't taste exactly like these, like meet the sources, incredible. But these turned out pretty darn good and I think they're gonna taste even better after they're refrigerated. Let me show you what they look like. They were definitely messy to roll, but they turned out so well. I'm obsessed. I can't wait to eat them. Alright, here's dinner. Japanese sweet potato, chicken sausages, Brussels. I'm gonna add some mustard and ketchup to my sausage and that'll be dinner. I'm going to save the cleanup for later. I kinda cleaned as I made everything, but the balls did kinda make a mess. They're just so sticky and I need to make sure that next time I don't add that amount, that much water. I think if I had added more coconut oil, that would have been better. Actually, what would have been better is having coconut butter, but I don't even know where you can get that. I think actually Whole Foods has it. Like raw coconut butter would have been so, so good. Oh my gosh, this mustard won't open. There we go. I'm so excited to eat. Alright, bon appetit. I'm gonna go watch The Bachelor.
Last night, it's not an easy night. A lot didn't know if she could be here anymore. And it's scary because she's someone I do see a few today can be.
Okay, so I'm cleaning up right now, but we obviously need to do a taste test now that they've been in the fridge for a little bit of time. So taste test together. So good. I'm a fan. I did good. The only, like, I feel like they need, just need to be in the fridge longer, but honestly, pretty spot on. So good. I need to remake these. Absolutely obsessed. It is ten thirty. I just came home from doing my walk for seventy-five hard. I was planning on going to bed earlier than this, but I just got caught up with a bunch of random stuff. I'm gonna read my Kindle and read my book, read my ten pages and go to bed and wake up early. I'm gonna set my alarm to five, I think, so that way I could get a chapter of my studying done. So I shall see you in the morning. Good night. Good morning. It is eight o'clock. I woke up this morning right before my alarm, which was kind of nice because I feel like waking up right before your alarm makes you feel like, like you did it yourself, if that makes sense. Anyways, I actually had a really, really productive morning. Basically, I had this quiz that I had to do was fifty questions. That actually took up the majority of my morning. I thought that I was gonna get a full chapter of studying in, but I didn't realize that I had that test or quiz to do. So I did that and then I edited two pieces of short form content. One is for a gifting and then one was, um, actually three. One was a grocery haul that I'm gonna post later today. There was one more. Oh yeah, I filmed or edited my ten mile run video that I filmed when I ran my ten miles. I've been like so behind on my content. It's insane. I need to get on top of it. But yeah, so I did that this morning and now I'm gonna go to the gym. It's so cold and gross and like, hmm, it's disappointing, honestly. I had a cup of coffee and I definitely feel like I need more caffeine. Alright, I'm getting ready for the gym. Well, I'm ready, but I wanted to show Cher that I popped open this cherry lime first form drink. Oh my goodness, it is so good. I got their like variety pack to try all of their flavors out to see which one I liked most. And I tried the, I think it was like orange sunrise or something. That was the first one I've tried. This one is absolutely delicious. Cherry lime. Tastes like a cherry Coke to me, but like ten times better. I'm off to the gym. I shall see you after. Okay, so after the gym, I stopped by the farmer's market and I picked up some berries. And I made a little yogurt bowl with vanilla protein powder, the Keon vanilla. Plain yogurt, blackberries, blueberries, and then scrambled eggs with avocado. I made pickled onions yesterday and I really want some. I was gonna buy bread, but I didn't. So we're just having, um, avocado toast minus the toast. I just came home from work at six thirty. I got off at like six and I went over to Target to get some chipotle peppers because I really wanna make like a chipotle cream sauce. But I noticed that they're made in soybean oil, so I don't want that. And then I was like, alright, well, I guess I'm gonna go over to Trader Joe's and get some limes and bone broth, which I did get, and like some tomatoes. I, uh, whoa. Oh no, my box, my tissue box is ruined. It's raining. It's literally dumping rain. I got tissues because I needed them. I got some coconut spray. I really like making my eggs in coconut oil, so I picked that up. I got some more dates because I ran out. I'm starving, so I'm gonna have this beef chopstick. Got some tomatoes, which I needed. I needed a red onion. My dinner plans changed, so tonight I'm gonna be eating at home. I'm gonna make some taco bowls and then, or like a deconstructed taco bowl. And then I'll have the pasta dish that I was planning, planning on making tomorrow. I got some peanut butter dark chocolate cups. I was really craving these. Ingredients not good, but I was really in the mood. Bone broth, which is what I wanted. Coconut water because I'm out. Cilantro for my bowls and some banana chips because I was really craving them. I literally left the house such a mess. Okay, so yeah, so I got some berries from the farmer's market. I literally, they're like basically gone already. And when I was at Trader Joe's, I got these because they looked so good. And I tried them and they actually taste quite good. The plan for this evening, since I left the house such a mess, is to tidy up the house. I feel like I'm constantly cleaning this house. It's always messy. Like it's consistently getting messy. But I'm gonna make dinner. I'm gonna make deconstructed taco bowls, like I said. I got some tomatoes for them, cilantro. I just really wish I could make some kind of sauce. So I'm gonna try. But hey Alexa, what time does the Y close?
Hmm, I don't know that.
What time does the YMCA close?
It's permanently closed.
Since when? I went there yesterday. Alexa's broken. So I'm gonna try to go to the sauna. I don't know if you guys are tired of me changing my mind twenty-four seven. Because I feel like lately I've been saying I'm gonna do or make a specific dinner every single night and I always, I just don't. I'm making these instead. It's just gonna be faster. So we're gonna have Greek bowls instead. A little, yeah, a little Greek bowl moment. Let's do it. It's gonna be faster. It's already six forty. I'm starving. These are so good. Alrighty, here is dinner. She looks stunning. I made a little Greek yogurt sauce. Rice, tomatoes, pickled red onion. Looks so good. Alright, I finished cleaning. Actually, I still have some laundry that I need to do, but I'm off to go get my second workout out of the way. I do not wanna go, but we're gonna get this done. Let's go. I'm absolutely dead. I'm going to bed. I'm gonna try to wake up early. Well, I'm, we're gonna wake up early, but the point is to go to bed early. It's nine fifty-five. I'm just gonna shower, finish up that laundry and read and I'm, go to bed before eleven. So good night and I will see you in the morning. It is eight o'clock. I'm filming on my phone because I am so tired. I can't even get up and get my camera, but I need to get up and get ready for the gym. I don't know what it is. I mean, like, I think I do. I think that I just need like to detox from life. Is that possible? Can we detox from life and still get paid for it? I'm gonna get ready for the gym. Hopefully that will wake me up because this cup of coffee did not do anything. I put all of the things in my drink this morning, including aminos. I even put like the tiniest amount of pre-workout, even though I'm gonna have a Celsius because I even put like the tiniest amount of pre-workout, even though I'm gonna have a Celsius because I feel like passing out. I've been up since five and it's eight and I feel like I could very easily just go straight back to bed. Like my eyes are still not waking up. So cheers. Just came home from the gym. I had such a great workout and then I was listening to this podcast on gut health. And I was like, oh my gosh, I need kimchi. I need kimchi immediately. I also immediately needed flowers. In my defense, I wanted to get flowers yesterday, but, um, it was like raining and I didn't really have hands. I also got more blackberries because they were so good yesterday. And do you see this? Do you see how many I ate? I got turkey. I got kimchi. I got bananas. I got more bone broth. Listen, you just can't, like, you can't trust me. You can't trust me when it comes to going into the store for one thing. Okay, I'm literally, I have like less than fifteen minutes, less than twenty minutes to shower, eat, change and go to work and tidy up. So I'll see you, I'll see you after work. Hello, it is eight forty-six. I just came home from work. I was only supposed to work lunch, but somebody called off, so I ended up staying. I'm gonna make some ground beef for dinner cuz I'm worried that it's gonna go bad. And I'm gonna shower and just chill for the rest of the night. There's some editing. Yeah, that's gonna be the end of the day. I'll probably end this vlog so I can start anew tomorrow. I work at eleven tomorrow. I'm opening, so I'll probably wake up early, gym. Made a little taco bowl with whatever I could find in my fridge, but I'm excited to eat. Alright, I showered, I ate, I changed into pajamas. I'm going to bed. I'm not getting to anything productive, unfortunately. I'm so brain dead. Completely brain dead. I'm just tired. I just need sleep. I'm having my overnight oats that I made yesterday. It wouldn't focus cuz the color is so pretty. Um, yeah, I'm having overnight oats and some tea. I added like a little bit of protein powder in here, but not much because I forgot to add it in yesterday and I just added a bunch of fresh berries and frozen berries. So this will be my little nightcap. My dinner was actually so good. I'm gonna continue buying that lean ground beef. It's like ninety-ten, I think. And I really liked how I seasoned it. I'll have to redo it and record it so that way you could try it out. But anyways, I'm gonna end this vlog here. I hope you enjoyed it. I'm gonna start a new one tomorrow for the weekend. And I think this weekend's vlog is actually gonna be really fun, so stay tuned for that. If you're not subscribed, hit that subscribe button, hit that notification bell so that you're notified whenever I upload a new video. Comment down below a blueberry if you've made it this far and I shall see you tomorrow. Good night.